With the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of the guard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. As we start this meeting, we want to move to Agenda Item Number Two, which is the introduction of the newly hired police officers for Marshall Police Department. I'm going to ask Jim Marshall, Director of Public Safety, Marshall Police Chief, to introduce our new officers. Jim?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time. Tonight, I'm excited to be here and introduce to you our four newest hired police officers from this past year. They've been through a thorough interviewing process. They've been through an intense field training program and excited to introduce them. But before I do so, Mayor and Council, I'd like to maybe say a quick thank you to Councilman Labatt. He's been part of this process early on, and I'm appreciative of his participation input during the hiring process, and not just the hiring process, but also the promotional process that occurred within our organization as well. So thankful for his time. I'm guessing that he probably thought he drew the short straw early on in the beginning of that year with his appointment to the Police Advisory Board, but thank you for your participation in that. Appreciate it. You know, Mayor and Council, over 20 years I've been working, and I still take time to give thanks for the privilege to do what I do, and especially for community and for Council that's been so supportive of its police department. And tonight, I'm, you know, but with that, with that privilege, I want to say, also comes some responsibilities and accountability with this position. And tonight, I'm pleased to introduce to you four officers that share that same excitement for what they do, and they also understand the responsibilities that we've given them, and they've confirmed those through the oath that they've taken, an oath that's really based on honor and integrity and honesty. Tonight, I'd like to begin by introducing to the very first person that we hired this past year is Officer John Espinoza. John actually graduated from YME. He's from the Granite Falls area. He attended his, or conducted his secondary education at Alexandria, and he's our first Hispanic and bilingual officer that we've hired. John's been just a great asset. He's fluent in Spanish, and not just an asset for our department, but he's been just a great resource for the departments and organizations within our community as well. Next to John is Officer Ben Kelly. Ben is actually a graduate from Marshall High School. He conducted a secondary education at Minnesota West, the Worthington Campus. Ben is married. Ben actually has six children. In his free time...
(laughter)
In his free time, he continues to serve our community, and not just our community, but our state, but serves us in the form of the National Guard. Ben has been in the leadership role now with the National Guard for over fourteen, fourteen and a half years nearly, so we're grateful for his service and glad to have him part of our team. Over here, we have Officer Nathan St. Abbe. Nathan also is a Marshall native. He graduated from Marshall High School, and maybe better than him graduating from Marshall High School, his wife did also. Nathan has three children. Nathan comes to us with some prior experience. Nathan, we used to work for the Austin Police Department and came to us with some just great comments made by them, so grateful to have him. But Nathan also has served us outside of his role. He was in the Navy for years in active duty and also serves, or served with the Navy Reserve for eight years. So glad to have Nathan part of our team as well. And the most recent hire is Officer Scott Wilson. Scott graduated from YME, so actually, I was just thinking about this. We have two YME graduates and two Marshall High School graduates. Scott conducted his secondary education at Alexandria. He comes to us with some prior experience as well. He used to work in North Dakota, and recently, for the last couple of years, worked for the Lyon County Sheriff's Department, so glad that he's with our organization. Scott actually recently became engaged and glad to say that his wife, or not wife, his fiancee, also works and lives in the city of Marshall, so grateful for them. But as well as you can see, just with these, not just with these four, you can see that the room is full of many of our personnel, the majority of our police department are present here tonight. We had a departmental meeting, and just want to say that when you look back there, that's really the backbone of the police department. Every day, every night, every weekend, every holiday, they do what's expected of them, and they do it well. And they've done it in the past year that's brought, had a lot of change, not just with new hires, but also a change within the organization, and they did it at such a high level, and I'm very proud of them, and I hope that you are too. And with that, I know there's a busy agenda, you guys. I think we'll stop there, and that's it.
Well, thank you, Jim.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
We wish you a long and successful career in the city of Marshall, and thank you to the entire department. We're proud of you. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Three. Consider the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held in November 12th. Are there any corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a motion?
Move.
Second. Motion by Steve, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Can we make an amendment to the packet first?
Pardon me?
Can we make an amendment to the packet to pull that item?
Oh, yes, yes. Well, let's take care of this first, and we'll vote. We'll close the voting. So the minutes are approved. There has been, um, let's go back to the agenda, and I'll ask if there's any changes to that agenda. There has been a request to pull Agenda Item Number 23. Are there any other changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that, that agenda. With number 23...
What is 23?
23 was Project Han Road Storm Sewer Reconstruction Project.
The numbers are buried in the paragraph. They didn't go to the left column.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
That one will be coming forward at a future meeting. So we're on Agenda Item Number Four. This is a public hearing. This is a public hearing on the adoption of the ordinance amendment to Section 86-1 definitions, and this really relates to the allowance of charging stations in a front yards. Very interesting. So with, to present this, this was introduced at our last council meeting, up for adoption. At this time, I'll have Ilya Gutman give a more complete explanation. Ilya?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So ZEF Energy is the company which builds charging stations for electric vehicles, which is becoming more and more common, and I believe they got a grant, and it will be built in the city of Marshall. The location was chosen to be next to the liquor store, and it happens to be that the best location for that is on the parking lot closer to the street, which places those charging stations in the required front yard. Current ordinance prohibits putting accessory equipment in the required front yard, so on the other hand, it's kind of common, would be assumed that it would be common for those stations to be placed in the parking lot, and many of them will be asked to put in the required front yard, which is the best location, more visible for electric vehicles. So we came up with the idea to change the ordinance, to change the definition of the accessory equipment to exclude up to two charging stations, the same as, for example, flag poles or electric poles are excluded. So that's the recommendation, to exclude up to two charging stations from the definition of the accessory equipment. Since we are changing definition, we're also proposing to change the definition of the users. We added different types of users, mix and so on, so that it will help the staff to make a determination which use will go to which zoning district. So our recommendation is, it was introduced, as the mayor said, and so our recommendation is to approve it.
Okay. Thank you, Ilya. As part of the public hearing, any comments from the legislature and ordinance committee, which this has been reviewed? Now, is there any public comment as part of the public hearing from the audience or council members?
So, so just for clarification for the public, so what it says, two units, and each one of those units will have two chargers.
May have.
May have up to two chargers. So you could actually have four.
Talking about two physical, two physical...
Four vehicle charges.
Right, but two physical poles with outlets.
Any other questions or inputs? Brad Rose?
Thank you, Mayor Burns. Question, Ilya, the reference to two, is that two post per property?
Correct.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other input as part of the public hearing? Craig?
As the use of electric vehicles grows, is that enough? I mean, what's a, what's a parking lot? Is it a hundred spaces? Is it ten spaces?
But remember that this applies only to the, it applies to the locations within the required front yard. You can put as many of them as you want anywhere on the other places outside of the required front yard.
Okay.
So it doesn't, it limits only within the front yard, not anywhere else on the property.
So with that being said, let's take a look at the liquor store again. Isn't there a whole parking lot in the front yard?
No.
It is not? That is, it's just that front road right away is the front yard?
Correct. Yeah.
Other questions? Or input as part of the public hearing?
Move closing the public hearing. Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. The closing of the public hearing, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
You have a voice vote, please?
All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A motion passes. We'll now consider then the ordinance. It was the subject of the public hearing. Questions about the ordinance? Now, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the change of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, it will move to a vote. Close the voting, and the motion does pass. We'll move then to the award of bids. The first of which is Agenda Item Number Five. This is the front end loader with the push blade and the aviation radio for the airport. We have a couple actions for the, here, we have the, the resolution authorizing the MinDOT grant agreement, and then after that, then we will consider the award of bids, which is the next agenda item, but we'll discuss both of these at the same time. So I'll call on Glenn Olson, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This kind of was a long time coming. We've had this piece of equipment on our capital improvement program at the airport for some years, and we wait until the MinDOT Aeronautics has funding available for equipment like this. We did finally get a offer for a grant agreement at 70% state share and 30% local share. We cannot award a bid until this agreement is approved, so that's why you have that on your agenda first. If you have any questions on the agreement first, and then on the vehicle second. Dean Kudrin is here from the Airport and Street Department for the, for any questions that you might have of the equipment.
Okay, so questions on the agreement first. Craig?
Mayor, I have a, just a procedural question. So if we approve the, the grant agreement and we actually approve a lesser amount, that's fine in the agreement. That's a maximum, not a, not a fixed amount.
That's correct. It's not to exceed.
Okay.
Any other questions about the agreement?
Now, basically, this is a two and a half year agreement. Is that correct, that, of the grant agreement? It says it expires June 30th of 2022.
Uh huh.
Now, can the equipment only be used at the airport during that two and a half year period, and any place after that?
No. It can be utilized anywhere, but the primary purpose, the primary location of work is the airport. That doesn't mean that it can't be used other places, but when it's needed at the airport, it's at the airport.
And that was my understanding, too, in conversations we had before, but Paragraph Seven seems to indicate differently, and it says that it will, we will not use the equipment for any purpose other than airport operations, so...
It's always been allowed.
Even though the agreement says otherwise?
Even though the agreement says this.
Okay.
Same thing with pickups or any equipment that we have out there. Its primary use is there. If there's ever a question of how come they're using it someplace else, when there's a need for it at the airport, then you'd run into trouble.
Okay. Well, I was concerned about the language here, because the language seems to indicate otherwise, so, thank you.
Any other questions about the agreement? If not, I entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John, to approve the agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for the grant agreement. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting, and the motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Six, which is to consider the award of bids for the front end loader and push blade with the aviation radio. We have a recommendation, and I believe this has also been reviewed by the Equipment Review Committee.
For the equipment itself?
Right. Glenn?
We have the recommendation in front of you. Dean Kudrin is here to answer any questions that you might have on the, on the equipment itself.
Questions? John?
Yeah, just checking, we look at the, the bid package. There were two larger units that were actually less expensive. Can you address why the recommendation was basically for the smaller unit?
Okay, the, the case unit you're probably talking about?
No, the, it's the 644K versus a 644L.
Those are actually identical machines. If you look on them at the packet, the, I got a call after we opened the bids that they're both 644Ks only had a locking front differential. The 644L is the only one that met all the specs, but we did rewrite the specs so everybody could bid, so we could see the price variations. So, and then the L series is a brand new model, is what the reason is for that, and the L, like I said, is the only one with the automatic four-wheel drive lockup on it. The others are slip and front differential lockup only and open rear end.
Yeah, there is actually, you know, from what I looked up, it looked like there was difference in the turning radius. The K's got a wider, about a three or four foot wider turning radius.
But in our situation, that wasn't a real issue. If I'm doing cul-de-sacs around town, which we do at the street shop, have a 644K with the automatic lockup axles, so, and primarily, this unit will be used for snow removal. So not saying it won't be used in the summer, because it will be, but it'd probably be used for different areas, so. So that's, the only reason we went with that one is the basic, just because it had the all-wheel lockup versus the other ones dent. And the actual cost on it, I think, is probably between the case, it's less. The only one that, that cat was quite a bit higher, as you can see, and that has a lot more options, too, but...
So you feel that the, the difference between proposal A and B is worth the extra $7,000?
Is that, the, between A and B?
Right.
A is four-wheel drive, automatic lockup, both axles. The B does not have an automatic lockup rear axle. It's an open axle, so means only one wheel will turn.
Okay, so to your opinion, it's worth the extra $7,000?
Definitely. Yep.
How about the difference between the $212,000 and the $246,000? That, to me, is a $34,000 difference.
That again is, just got the front lockup.
And that, that one is a used one that only 10 hours on it?
That's correct.
Would that one serve the purpose finding out at the airport?
It, it would, but it wouldn't give me the traction I would for like that automatic lock, lockup front and rear. For the extra, I know it's money, but when you're pushing snow, it makes a huge difference.
It's an extra $10,000 to our taxpayers, $34,000 total.
Right.
We have to justify to the taxpayers why we're doing this, and I know I visited with Lawrence Rogie today, and he said it really shouldn't make that much of a difference.
Yeah, well, blame me, it does make a difference if you're pushing snow, so...
And Steve?
So on that same, same line of thinking, Dean, what is the, what are we using now?
Right now, I just got a small little tractor with a loader.
And number two, if, if we were just to say no, and we needed to contract this out, what would be the cost? And that's, I know that's, that's a variable, depending on how much snow you get in the year.
Right, and we got a lot of surface that it's used for, all of our apron. Right now, we don't, we're using a, it's a big bat wing plow, and they're not designed for that, believe me. We're using it like a dozer, and it does, it works, it gets us by, but this thing would save so much more time. And right now, I mean, if you go out there, you look at, we're only cleaning basically the, the front apron in front of our hangers now, but when Air Park East opens, get buildings over there, you're talking twice the amount of snow, or area to clean.
Sure, but that's still, when you look at contracting it out over time, is it, is it worth? Because this is, comes down to if it's primarily, primarily for snow removal, we're going to be using it for six months.
We're going to be using it for pushing up snow dumps. We're going to be using it out probably at the compost site, too, to push up. I mean, it's not just going to sit there during the summer, you know, so...
How long do you think the equipment's going to last?
I would guess, well, the one we got now is probably close to 30 years old.
Right, so it's a long-term investment, a long, long-term.
It is, yep. And you know, like Jim's saying, I realize 10,000, but the state, the city extra share is only about 6,000.
Right, well, I was looking at the 34,000, and, and take 30%, that's 10,000.
It's 10,000.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so...
So on that...
For an extra 10,000, we're getting a, a better machine that can do more things and...
In my long, and I was hoping in this process, too, I actually got a front end blower for it in the CIP for the state. I was hoping it would come through at the same time, so that's my goal, is to put a front end blower on it, like we use at the street department now.
The other comment, kind of along with Steve's comment, is the snow removal is not just a one-time per event. I know you and your crew are out there multiple times to keep the runway open and keep the...
Right, it's continuous.
Right.
Yeah, it's, yeah, if you could just go and push, and far as cost to clean that for somebody to come in, it's got to be huge. I mean, they get 100 and probably 20 bucks an hour at least.
Greg?
Mr. Mayor, in comments that I've gotten from members of the Airport Commission that are in commercial aviation, can't ever say enough about the, the service that, that our staff gives that airport and that, what it does for Schwans and, and the other regular users out there, and appreciative in the operation of business and the safety, because they call ahead and, and let the crew out there, let Dean and the crew know when they're coming in, and, and they said, you know, it's amazing, but when, when they tell them, I'm going to be in at 7:30 or 10 o'clock at night, is there a chance? And, I mean, I, I get the difference, and I don't disagree with, with Councilman Lozinski's concern. It is taxpayers' money, whether it's state or, or the city. I know this is a big step up. Dean, I've got to believe that, you know, I'm sure if we gave you the, the absolute minimum, it would be an improvement, but I also understand the, the difference in this and, and see the, the 30-year layout and, and the difference on that, and probably maybe just wear and tear on tires if we've got all four of them pulling instead of spinning one, you know. I know maybe there's even some savings there. That's probably a stretch, but just looking at the ability for you guys to serve the, the aviation public, and those planes come in with more than a couple soles on them, so I think it's pretty important that we give you the tools that we need to, to keep that airport. I didn't realize it before, we've got the fifth longest runway in the state, so this isn't an airport that... I actually sat in a cafe over the weekend and listened to some people from a neighboring town that talked about the, the city just approved their budget for clearing snow at the airport, and the guys laughed, because one guy lives there, and he said, I don't think I've seen two planes land there all winter long, but the, the agreement is you keep the runways clear. We have two planes land in an hour out here on any given day, so, you know, quite a bit of difference there. So I really appreciate the service that the airport provides and that our staff do for that.
Let me make to another comment, too, quick, is, you know, the cheaper models, some of them got limited slip differentials, and they only, the limited slips only last so long, and then you can tear the rear ends apart and redo them, so that's an additional cost, too. And then the other thing, when we did the justification for this, I wrote up the justification for this to MinDOT, and that was one of my primary deals in there, was the safety side of it, so, and I think that's why they pushed the grant through.
So this is a hard mechanical lockup? It's actually a dead lockup?
Yep. Yep, it's a hydraulic lockup.
And Sharon, do you have a comment?
I just want to add, I, for feedback we get on snow removal, I would suggest that most of the complaints we get are from cul-de-sacs on snow removal, so timing and equipment may help us a little bit. It may not totally erase the feedback we get on that, but it is, it is a time-consuming snow removal. And then I just do want to kind of add, too, and you were aware of this, last year, but the streets department is renting a road grader again this year for the snow removal season. Last year, I think the, the rental cost was about 30,000.
Correct.
If we do that on a regular basis, you could argue the city may be better off purchasing it. Kind of depends, as Dean said, on, on a given year, but just to kind of put the, the cost of renting into perspective, nonetheless, we are renting some equipment for this coming snow season.
Yeah, we, we are renting that blade, and you'll never find another rent like that. I mean, $65 an hour to rent a big, one's cat, 160M is cheap, so, and I thank RNG for that, because they're the ones that are providing the, the blade, so...
Any other questions on the recommendation on the bid? If not, what are the wishes of the council?
I'd make a motion to purchase the 644L, as recommended.
Motion by John, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Craig. If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. The motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Seven, Consider the Authorization to Approve Towing and Storage Agreement between the city of Marshall and Pulver Motors LLC. Who has this? Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A few meetings ago, we were authorized to publish and ask, request for bids for the 2020-2021 snow season. This would be for, or, excuse me, towing and storage for 2020-2021. This was reviewed by the Police Chief for Director of Public Safety, and this contract would mirror the, the previous contract with no language changes. There is one item I'd like to amend from the contract, stating that to be, in the contract in your packet, it's $85 a tow. That's actually going to be $75 a tow. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the towing and storage agreement between the city?
Second.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Jim. Discussion?
The only thing I'd like to point out is, is in the letter that Pulver Towing wrote to the city is the outstanding relationship that they've developed with the police and fire department. I read that, and I may be very proud of our fire department and our police department, that they work very well together to make this, you know, make it work, and I'm glad, I'm happy to see letters like that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add a statement to that, too, and, and it does speak very highly of our, of our public safety department, and I really appreciate that. I think we should be very proud of our, our fire and police department. And also, I really appreciate Pulver as a business in the community, because they are extremely engaged in the individual council member items. Later on this evening, I'm going to talk a little bit about Merit Center, and one of the significant items at Merit Center has a large footprint from Pulver Towing in that also, so they've, they've been a, a good addition. So they've been a good addition to the community as a business and as just a community member, so I really appreciate that.
Very good. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda include the partnership agreement between the City of Marshall and Marshall Municipal Utilities, the joint powers agreement between the state of Minnesota BCA and the City of Marshall Police Department, the call for a public hearing regarding proposed property tax abatement at three oh one Stevens Avenue, calling for a public hearing regarding a proposed property tax abatement at fifteen hundred Travis Road, consider the approval of temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Friends of the Orchestra Limited, the introduction of the ordinance to add the interim use permit with associated changes, and call for a public hearing on that, the introduction of the ordinance on snow removal on private streets, and call for a public hearing, the, consider the approval of the outdoor public fireworks display for the Light Up the Night event this Friday, and then finally, the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda? Any member of the council wants remove, or prefers a separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor, eight, ten, and eleven, please.
Any other item?
Number thirteen.
And any other item? If not, is there a motion for the remaining items on the consent agenda?
So... Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. The motion passes. Move then to agenda number eight. This is the partnership agreement. Craig?
Yeah, just for clarity, for the general viewing public, I think there might be people that don't actually look into the packets, and just to give the, our residents an idea of what we look at, because I think they all understand that Marshall Municipal Utility is part of the city, and I suppose they're wondering, why do we have to go into a partnership agreement with something that is part of the city? So just an explanation of what this agreement covers, I think, would be helpful for the public.
And it is a comprehensive agreement, and the, our joint committee, myself, council member De Kramer, Sharon, our administrator and Brad Rose has met, as well as our, along with our staffs, and reviewed this. And Brad, do you wanna come up? And maybe we'll just do a general walkthrough of the items on the, that are included. And the first, while you're walking up, I'll cover the payment in lieu of taxes, which is a major one. This is based on a five-year rolling average on the sale of electricity, which is really in line with industry averages around the state and the country, so... Glad to give you enough time to walk up, so...
Very good. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, esteemed staff. Thank you for having this on your agenda tonight. I'm happy to go into any one of the twelve agreements that make up the packet. I would look to direction from the council, or Sharon, which ones you want me to go into in depth? But at the committee level, we went to each one, went over them with a fine-tooth comb. Are there any specifically that you would like me to talk further about?
The payment in lieu of taxes, it's based on electric sales, and it seems like it's pretty stabilized, hasn't it? I mean, they mount a kilowatt hours there, and do you foresee that changing much in the years to come here?
Well, we've talked about electric vehicles, and in the industry, the electric industry, that is something that all electric utilities are thinking is going to be a growth area, where some of the kilowatt-hour sales will be increasing related to that. You heard about the public charging station that's gonna be located in the community, funded by the Volkswagen settlement money by a company called ZEP. And that's halfway constructed. It'd probably be finished fairly soon, I think. They're waiting on some of their equipment. But in the new year, 2020, our utility is going to be offering a discount program for level-two chargers that people might wanna put in their garage. You have to be electric vehicle owner and a customer of ours, but if you are a, if you meet those qualifications, we wanna make sure you put a smart charger in your garage, and we're gonna provide incentives to encourage that to happen. So I think that's a movement that is going to continue to grow. If you just watch the media advertising, Ford's coming out with an electric Mustang, electric Ford F-150. So I think you're starting to see a real commitment by the auto dealers, auto manufacturers, to make a wider variety of vehicles available. And as the charging infrastructure gets built out, that's gonna increase. So as to the stagnant level of the electric sales in the community, actually, we take some level of pride in the fact that those sales are fairly level and slightly sometimes decreasing, because we work hard on helping our customers use as all the electricity they want, but help them use less of it through our energy efficiency efforts, so things like LED light bulbs and other measures like that, so...
Probably a little bit more of a comment, maybe, and a question on the first one is just, if you look at the street lighting, that really hasn't changed much, although we've, the utilities has changed out pretty much all the lighting to LEDs. Just that the energy usage is down, but there's still basically equipment and light bulbs and fixtures to pay for. So that has remained fairly flat, but I figure in the next probably two years, you'll see that dropping off.
Hopefully, the energy, a lot of the energies part of it's gonna drop off.
Yeah.
What we do there is we, during our rate study, part of our, every three years, when we do a rate study, we look at a fully allocated cost to do street lighting, which includes not just the energy, but the plant cost to build it, maintain it. And then we split that fifty-fifty between the city and MMU. The half that we have, we rate base that within the electric rates.
And then just the last comment is just the continuation for this year of the joint industrial land development. That's been very key for the city to get the industrial parks up to the point of shovel-ready. So that's been a, really quite an assistance for the city in doing that, so...
Starting twelve years ago is when we started that process. That's right.
And Brad, maybe just, one of the other ones is item four, the billing and collections partnership that we have that you provide for the city?
Right, so we do the same thing there. We do a fully allocated analysis of what it costs to do the billing and collection for all the utilities that we build for. That'd be electric water, the ones that we operate. Sanitary sewer, stormwater utilities, the one that you operate. And then we allocate each utility a percentage of those costs. And we arrive at a figure that for the city, we cut it in half, because we wanna make sure you understand you're getting a good deal for that service.
Just possibly touch on your participation, the efforts that you've done in the chloride reduction and the impact that that has to the city?
Yeah, this is another one we've talked about with the council for quite a few years, and I'm happy to report that the project is under construction right now. And we hope by this time next year, we're actually starting to do some work to change the water quality to have softer water. So, and we appreciate the support the council extended to us for that project. We think that's another example of how the partnership works well to meet some pretty difficult goals, like reducing the chloride levels in the discharge to the river.
We've gone through nearly, or the majority of the items. One of the other items, and we have members of the fire department that are in the audience, there is a line or agreement for the fire protection service, and that's for the readiness to serve, the capacity, the allocated cost of what that is, not only for the fire hydrants, but the capacity to service those fire hydrants.
Right. And again, during the rate study time, once every three years, we do a fully allocated cost of fire protection. So a percentage of the water main cost, the tower cost, the pumping cost, the hydrant cost, up to arrive at a figure. Then that figure, we split between the city and MMU. The city's share is capped at a hundred and forty-five thousand, and it's been capped for quite a few years. The difference MMU picks up, which is a slightly higher figure, the water, we rate base those costs within the water fund.
Two quick questions here. One is, well, maybe the one isn't quick, but one of them is, we have the target rate per kilowatt hour for the payment in lieu of taxes of point zero zero one four. And you maybe mentioned that before, but is that, is that gonna be changing? Is that, how long has it been at that rate, and should it be changed or not?
I don't think it should be changed. And you asked me this question last year.
Yeah.
I came ready, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you this.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Our National Association, the American Public Power Association, I think every two or three years, does a survey, and they ask their, some two thousand members, what do you contribute to your communities in payment in lieu of tax? And they break it down by region, they break it down by size of utility, and that is a summary I just handed out. I'm happy to report that we're right, where we need to be. In the most recent year, I think we're at five point one percent of our electric revenues. I have also prepared...
So it's a good thing I asked you the question.
Great question.
So you can have the handouts here.
You asked me last year.
I'm consistent.
One of the things we wanna do is be competitive with the investor-owned community, investor-owned utilities like Excel Energy. And Excel Energy and other regional investor-owned utilities pay four point seven percent of their revenues towards local government tax support. And our four point seven percent is the regional average for all municipal utilities as well. Here in our community, we're at five point one percent on dollars that our utility provides the city. In either straight dollar contributions through the pilot, or in lieu of that, we give services and we account for those services. Or if we contribute a hundred, the balance on the fire protection, we count that, or dollars that we're putting in our rate base, you're not putting in your general fund tax base, a street lighting, the half that we contribute. I'm counting those. And add them up, it comes to five point one percent of our gross revenue. And as long as we stay in the same range as our competitors, the investor-owned utilities, then we have a supportable competitive position for our customers. And I think that's a longtime goal of ours. So the one point four mils per kilowatt hour, that still works. I think it yields a fair dollar amount to come to the city.
Okay, the last question was, one of the major changes, I think, is in information technology, the agreement between the city and MMU. And, you know, we've had the agreement, I assume, for quite a while, and it's being proposed that we go our separate ways. And I guess what I'm wondering is, if it worked all these years, and I assume we did it for saving money, what is it that has changed that now it's better to go our separate ways?
Well, I'm gonna defer to Sharon to answer the question. But just in general, think about your own personal use of electronics and computers over the last twenty years. How much more complicated, how much more concerned you are personally in your business or your, or your personal use of things like cybersecurity. Just multiply that many-fold when you're a utility. All the bad guys in the world are trying to get in and do bad things to the utility, whether it's turning off the power or other things. But as to the specific question, once every, I think it's been three to five years, we will ask our IT consultants, because neither the city or MMU maintain a staff of IT experts. To work with us to develop a technology action plan, that'll give us the guiding, budgetary guidance on how we can keep our systems replaced in a timely manner and able to serve us. And we look at not just the capacity to do the work, but also the cybersecurity profile we have to maintain. As we did that this cycle, with the joint effort, looking at both organizations, the preliminary technology action plan dollar amount, when we sat down for the first time with city staff to review that, it became pretty obvious, I think, to city staff that it may be time to look at a different way of doing it. At that point, I'm gonna ask Sharon to take over.
Maybe just one additional comment. I know in our joint meeting, Brad, you had made the statement that, given the things that you've already stated here, the increased security needs because you're a utility that is connected with the electrical grid
Right.
that serves the nation, and because the existing servers are at the point where, you know, to keep up with that, they quite honestly need to be replaced, and that capacity of what is necessary for the replacement is really more than what the city needs are.
I think that's, I think, first of all, I agree with that conclusion, but I think Sharon can do a better job of
Go ahead.
of explaining it.
Well, I did provide a memo, and it listed out in bullet points the city's position on the technical action plan. And it very, it kind of ranges from the end-user experience and what we have for expectations. The security needs is mentioned by the mayor and Brad, where the equipment is currently. And then lastly, I put costs, because it's not just about costs, it's about, you know, a lot of different reasons. So I kind of feel like, you know, if this was personal, we'd stay with MMU. We like MMU. And we like the leadership that Brad has provided. We wouldn't actually be looking at hardly any of this if Brad did not initiate the technical action plan to begin with. So we really appreciate that analysis. We found out some things and discovered some things about our own network, some needs and some opportunities. So that's been really helpful for the city. But I think we've, it may be kind of lame in terms, we've kind of grown up, and it's time for us to move out of the house. And I think for us, the needs that we have are becoming greater, similar to what Brad says. We're utilizing IT more and more on a, on a year-to-year basis. So what I provided in the memo is the projected IT costs for the city over the next four years. This is from 2019 to 2022. And under the technical action plan, the cost would have been six hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars for the city's portion. That does include operating. It isn't just capital equipment. And we did wanna explore, could we find a better cost alternative to this? In addition to meeting some of our end-user IT needs, we obtained a quote from the computer man, who's had a longstanding relationship with the city. He is in the audience tonight, and he can answer some of the technical questions about kind of what we're looking at doing, and that's Brian Hart. He's actually begun some of this migration. And the project has been somewhat sped up. We were gonna actually kind of take our time in 2020 somewhat, but we, we kind of felt that there was an opportunity in addition to the equipment and user needs, but with the move to SMSU. So some of this work really had to start earlier rather than later. We wanna be fully operational by the thirtieth of December, so we've got a lot of work to do. But some of the initial, I should say, the initial quote we got from the computer man is, and it's a little bit of an evolving quote, because some of the equipment that he specked out is changing, because we're learning things as we go along. We, some of the equipment wasn't needed, but it would probably be less, about half the cost of, of, of the, of the projected cost that MMU provided us. That's what we think we'll save over the next four to five years. And I'm gonna maybe call up Brian, because I want him to kind of back me up on this, on this, but that's kind of what we've looked at. He may argue it's a little bit more. I kind of wanna be conservative and say it's about half is what we're thinking about when we go on our own network. We will have to, you know, service our own equipment, and we've compared hourly rates with RSM, which is the provider of service to MMU with the computer man, and they're more favorable. And then lastly, we've actually utilized the third-party IT consultant to review both the technical action plan and the quote from computer man. So we've done our due diligence and feel really good about what the, what's been specked out for us in equipment. out for us in equipment. And the, the third-party consultant is also, has a, has a lead with the state of Minnesota. So that's kind of sped up some of the implementation of what we're trying to do. And it's been helpful to have Brad kind of fully aware of what we do, because if we ever get a delay, this is just kind of in the last couple of weeks with RSM or, or any of this implementation, it's been good to kind of have your support, because when you tell RSM something, they do it quicker than when we tell them. So we really appreciate that. So that's really kind of why we, we are looking at separation. We've, we've just kind of reached that point. The timing is great and we think we can save money.
Just a comment and then a final question on it. I would assume that, you know, if, if the City of Marshall feels like it's paying too much of the cost right now, I mean, could, is it possible the agreement could be tweaked to change the percentage of the costs that the city pays versus MMU? Is it something that could be tweaked? And the other comment is, it just seems like if you can share hardware and software in a certain sense and benefit from it, you would think that it would, there'd be savings there of sharing rather than going your own separate ways. And my, so my final question here is, can we say that the total cost of MMU and the City of Marshall going separate will be less than the total cost of us staying, staying together?
I believe it. Glenn, I truly believe that is the case. As to the, the intuitive savings you referenced, I believe we, as a community, for the last two decades have experienced that. Together, each of us had a more robust IT environment to work with than we would have if we had done it separately. But because of the complications of the modern world of the cybersecurity demands that are placed upon us, that is no longer the case. And we have to do what we have to do. And we were in a sharing partnership on the topic. When the city looked at the number and said, I think it may be time for us to do it ourselves, I didn't, I thought that probably is exactly right. And I think what they're, the steps that they're taking, that they're initiating with to try to hit an end-of-the-year deadline are, I applaud them for that. It's challenging. I think they got the right team pulled together to accomplish it. There are things that we're gonna have to do at MMU and with our consultant, RSM, to help make that happen. I know even this afternoon, there were good conversations on the topic and there's gonna be more tomorrow with our consultants, so.
And, you know, Councilman Schaefer mentioned before that MMU is part of the city. And we want to do what's best for the city and for MMU. And I just wanted to make sure that it would be a good switch for all of us and it wouldn't benefit one at the expense of the other one.
No.
So, so we're all gonna benefit from the change in the agreement, in your opinion.
I believe that's gonna occur. I can't give you a spreadsheet to prove it to you tonight, because the nature of the topic we're talking about. But yes, I believe that will be the case.
Just one thing that Brad, you may want to address is something that has changed since the start of this agreement way back about 10, 12 years ago or whatever, to now is the status of MMU in regards to transmission services.
Right.
You're a different utility in the eyes of whoever it is. And you may want to address that a little bit more in detail.
Right. So we have a high voltage transmission loop around Marshall and connects four miles out to the Excel Substation that we own. That is part of the bulk electric system, sometimes simplistically referred to as the grid, right? While as a part owner of the bulk electric system, we have certain obligations on how we maintain it, the standards that we have to apply to how we operate with it relative to the other utilities that are connected to the grid are very exacting and demanding. There are standards that are brought about by the North American Electric Reliability Council or NERC. And MMU is a NERC entity, is a transmission-owning member of NERC. That didn't exist before 2016. Before that, that, that was not the fact. It became the fact after that date. Now, there's a real advantage to us being a member of the bulk electric system. And we get paid for that ownership of that transmission, almost $2 million a year. That $2 million a year lowers our overall transmission costs that we have to pay Excel Energy to bring electricity to town. So it goes from roughly from six to $4 million a year. And those savings goes directly to the ratepayer, dollar for dollar. So there's an advantage to us having a little piece of that bulk electric system, but with it comes higher standards that we have to comply with, including cybersecurity standards.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And, and I apologize for taking us out longer, but I think that, Brad, you hit on one of the key things that comes to my mind is that Marshall Municipal Utilities for your exposure maintains a 24/7 watch person on your panels. I believe that part of that, as we're partnered up, you also watch some of our systems through our SCADA. As we separate out, of course, that goes away. But I think that because of the fact that we have, I think, a different set of covenants for the city, for our on-call staff, for their ability to access our system actually gives MMU and their grid an undue or an unnecessary exposure for cybersecurity. And to me, that's one part of the separation that I think is beneficial for all of us also, is to put another physical brake in that to, to take away a possibility for a backdoor into your system.
That's exactly right.
So any other comments about the proposed partnership agreement?
Brad, thank you very much for coming up and doing that.
Me bet.
I really appreciate that.
I was looking forward to.
And I'd like to move that we adopt that agreement.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion. Just a side comment, you know, this was thoroughly reviewed by the partnership agreement. I know we're meeting in January to talk about some of our processes. And we may want to talk about, you know, if we're gonna go through the same detail here as we did there, do we need a partnership agreement? That'll be a discussion at a retreat level, I believe, so. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting and the motion passes. So then we'll move to agenda number.
Mayor Burns, with your indulgence. John DeCramer, lie us on to the Utility Commission, asked me to bring something and I did. We just changed our rates for next year following a public hearing last week. Thank you, Russ, for attending and Bob Vanmore attended. John, you asked me to hand these out, so I'm gonna do it. Here's the electric rate comparison, the most recent year that I have. Pass those down. The spreadsheets reflects the Minnesota Municipal Utilities and where MMU stands on a relative cost basis. We're on a composite level, we're among the cheapest in the state. The top set of figures also will show you what other types of utilities' costs are on average. The summary then, the graph summary that is also, I think, followed along, didn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Reflects after these round of rate increases that we just took action on last week, how our overall water and electric costs compare from 2015 through 2021. And while our water costs did have to go up to make softer water, our electric costs have enjoyed some decreases brought about by a change in wholesale power suppliers. And we also are projecting going out for the next three or four years, a very static electric wholesale environment. So we anticipate our electric rates are gonna hold at that level. So overall, water and electric, the average residential customer in 2021 is going to be paying just a little bit less than what they were paying in 2015. That's what that summary graph shows. Any questions? If not, thank you, Mayor Rob.
Thank you, Brad. We'll move then to agenda number 11. Russ?
13.
Or 13.
Number 10.
Number 10. Number 10.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just a small change on, on section 86-50, number 14, and I had a chance to visit with Ilya and Jason about this, and it says, "No customers shall be present between 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM." And Ilya may address this, but I, I think we kind of agreed to change 8:00 AM to 6:00 AM, as if, if I remember right, so. Yep.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Yes, we did look at that thing and we are okay with changing the timing to allow people to have home occupation earlier, so.
Okay.
Just a minor change.
With that, is there a motion, Russ?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting and the motion passes. And again, that was the call for the public hearing on that issue. The, and number 13, Craig.
I didn't ask for 13. I actually asked for 10 and 11.
The tax abatements.
Right.
Oh, okay. I just circled the wrong one, okay. Did you ask for 13?
I asked for 13.
Okay.
And the question that I have on these is that I believe that one of them has come in at least for, on timing.
Right.
Correct? And.
Right.
I know that we've, every time these come up, we're still trying to figure out, in my opinion, how to best manage this abatement process. I believe that at our, at our most recent one that we've approved, it was pointed out that the county goes on calendar year. So if you're doing the work in 2019, you apply anytime within 2019.
Sort of.
Sort of?
Yeah.
I look at this, I don't want to make it complicated or exclusive for people to take advantage of this. I think the intent was is increased in property value either by new construction or additions to construction. That would also increase the tax base, because it increases the property value and also hopefully on the commercial or industrial adds opportunity for additional employment within the community. So I think this has been a very positively achieved tool. I know we're kind of all over the place. We did the one on the daycare and I believe that was a 10% penalty. Any actions that we would take moving forward, I hope we could go back and include those and amend those previous agreements too, to make them conform. But I would really like to see us figure out how to do this as these properties figure out what this tool is. I mean, one of the properties that's applied for this has already got a certificate of occupancy. I don't want to penalize them for doing the work, okay? And I just, I, I, I respect the work that our, that our committees have done, the commissions that have reviewed this and made their recommendations. I know we started out, we had a but-for on that that was put on that we hadn't talked about. So I mean, we've come a long way with this and I think every time we touch it, I believe we make it better, because I think we make it more usable for the applicant and that's my goal.
Sharon and then John.
So I didn't put forth a full recommendation for the approval of the abatement, because it's just calling for a public hearing. But the next meeting, there'll be a recommendation to approve an abatement without penalty. And this is at a direction of the EDA Board, who were apprised of the recent council action and, and got some feedback from them on, on should there be a penalty or no penalty. And during the EDA Board meeting, I recommended that there not be a penalty. And I did actually recommend that to the council for the daycare facility as well and nobody listened to me. So I'm gonna come back again and I'm gonna recommend it for these abatements. And hopefully we have a good discussion and whatever the council decides for these abatements, when we approve them at the next meeting, obviously, we will follow the wishes of the council. But I, I will be coming as the intermediate director with a recommendation to approve them with no penalty. And, and, and some of it is related to the ease of having similar policy with the county. Their, their policy states if the construction is completed after January 1 of 2019, it could actually technically be started in 2018, as long as it's completed after January 1 of, of 2019. And, and we'll get their actual language as well. So that's the direction EDA Board gave. And we will be coming forth at the next meeting with the formal recommendation and background to approve it with no penalty. One may ask, should we go back and talk about the daycare? There, in the adapting, enabling resolution, there's a provision in there that states that the council can amend or revise the abatement as it sees fit. We're not locked into the abatement, even though we, we do an abatement agreement and, and obviously adopt the resolution, we still maintain that right to revise as we see fit. That would be something that the, the council could do. I could bring that forward as well. The, the daycare got different abatement rates. The percentages were higher than what I'm recommending. I'm really following, again, the county policy. So probably more information than you needed to know and I appreciate it, because we're probably all thinking the same thing, but I wanted to give you the feedback from the EDA Board. And I think, John, probably, I think I covered everything, John, but.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that wasn't gonna be my comment, so yeah, I think you've got it covered. That'll be addressed back when we bring it back.
And actually, I think if my memory is correct, I think we had multiple motions.
Yeah.
On that. And I think one of the motions was for none. That failed for a second. Then there was a bigger one, which failed through the vote. And then we got the one we actually adopted, because I remember I made that one. I made the first one and the last one. I appreciate it. That's, that's why I had these pulled. I want to have that discussion, so.
So Craig, do you want to make a motion to call for a public hearing?
Well, I think before, I just, I think Sharon, we should take a look at that other one. For consistency, we, we can't do these different.
Right.
So I think that needs to be addressed, if it has to be on the agenda to be addressed, because I don't know if that legally could get us in trouble, but we, we can't start showing favoritism, because as Glenn always likes to use the word winners and losers, well, we are picking a winner or a loser if we don't address.
Right.
That one. So I do believe that needs to be addressed and be done fairly.
That was, that was the recommendation, the EDA, that we go back and the EDA recommended that we remove the penalty for the daycare, so.
Perfect.
Yeah. And, and that's my whole point, is I want us to be inclusive and as, as encouraging and not exclusive. I don't want to, I don't want to make people have to earn this. They earned it by doing the project unless there's some other condition there and I want to recognize that. And I, every time we touch this, I think we make it better, so I really appreciate that work. It's a very positive tool, I believe. And I would make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Make a motion to call for the public hearing. I'm sorry, to call for the hearing.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. To call for the public hearing, that will be held at our next regular council meeting. Discussion.
Just related to what they're saying here. I mean, oftentimes, there's a reason for a penalty. You, you have a penalty because you want people to do it a certain way. And as I look at the applicants for these abatements here, I think they're both professional contractors. And you would think that the professional contractors would know the rules. You know, if it's, it's a property owner who's not familiar with the rules, I can see it might be unfair to penalize them, but it, you know, I would hope that the contractors in town know the rules for abatement and would follow the rules.
Neither of these guys are professional contractors.
That's it?
Neither of them are professional contractors.
The, what I'm looking at is James Carr.
He is not a contractor. Carr, Carr Construction sold out about four years ago.
The other, the other point, though, is that this is a new procedure. And as has been stated, there are, you know, adjustments that are necessary with any new procedure as we, as we learn more. Any other discussion on the motion to introduce and call for the public hearing? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting and the motion does pass. Now we'll go to agenda number 13. Russ, I think.
No, we have to do 11 yet.
I've already handled that.
Okay.
Yep.
Now we have to do 11.
11.
And under that same discussion, I, I moved that we call for the public hearing regarding proposed property tax abatement at 1500 Travis Road.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting and that motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we made it through the consent agenda.[1774.11][1774.11](Laughter). So we'll move to agenda number 17. This is the United Community Action Partnership in the City of Marshall, 2020 Transit Agreement. Kathleen is with us tonight. Sharon, I'll turn to you to introduce this item.
Right. The city has been working with UCAP for many years on transit and transit operations and Kathleen Amack and I have visited a little bit on the, on the. Kathleen Amack and I have visited a little bit on the, on the transit agreement and she's here to present the, the annual agreement, which I believe she wants to propose as a multiple-year agreement. So Kathleen.
Kathleen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. Historically, we've come in front of the council every year to present a, a service agreement and the reason being is because there's usually a change to the agreement under B one and B two, which is request, could possibly be requesting local share support in both operating and capital. And so we've been going through a new process with Mindot in submitting for multi-year grant agreements and that has been successful. So we've been, we brought this to our advise, our transportation advisory committee, is the city of Marshall and the surrounding Lyon County area, and asked if we would like to follow suit with the, the service agreements across the board so that we can be in compliance when we submit grants and show that we have the local support. And so in the, in the service agreement that you have before you, we have switched it to an ongoing service agreement with a couple changes. Under B one, you will see that the change is to cover a portion up to fifteen percent of local operating share and also under B two, up to twenty percent of capital. And the reason being for that is Mindot has graciously changed some of their state share versus the local share. So for example, this year, Mindot has covered ninety-five percent of operating, so we've only had to come up with five percent local share. And with capital for next year, for two thousand and twenty-one, they've come, for two thousand and twenty, sorry, I'm a year ahead of myself, they are going to cover ninety percent. So we only have to come up with ten percent. So that's why we've kind of changed some of the wording and we would like to go with a multi-year contract.
Okay. Thank you, Kathleen. Questions?
I move approval.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Thank you for a discussion of the motion. I was gonna thank Kathleen for the service that Ucap is providing and the, I think one of the reasons Mindot looks favorably on, on this agreement is because of the professionalism that you provide, not only the city of Marshall, but actually a pretty wide area, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting? Or you're gonna, close the?
I missed it. That's okay.
Are you yes or no?
I voted yes, yeah.
So all voted in the affirmative. Motion passes. Move then to Agenda item number eighteen. This is the purchase of the self-contained breathing apparatus. With us tonight is Quentin Brunsfold, Marshall Fire Chief. Quentin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd first like to introduce you to Andrew Desair. He's Lieutenant on our fire department. Andrew's kind of done a little spearheading of this project for us in order to come up with the best solution, what's needed, most importantly, for the firefighters and for the city. So I'd like to thank Andrew for his time, for what he's done for this project. A little background information that was provided to you in your packet. A self-contained breathing apparatus or an SCBA is a device worn by rescue workers or firefighters that provides breathable air in an immediately dangerous or life, health atmosphere, or IDLH. An SCBA has four main components, a high-pressure composite tank, a pressure regulator, an inhalation connection with the, with the mask, and a pass or a personal safety system device. SCBAs are designed for firefighting, tend to be expensive because the material is used to provide flame resistance and to reduce weight on the firefighter. SCBAs using firefighter, used in firefighting must meet guidelines established by the National Fire Protection Association standards. The Marshall Fire Department currently outfits approximately half the firefighters, twenty-eight with SCBAs. The current SCBAs have exceeded their life expectancy of fifteen years and no longer meet the minimum standards determined by the NFBA. Efforts to replace parts on older apparatus is becoming different, difficult and unsafe to the firefighters. In two thousand and eighteen, the Marshall Fire Department applied for a federal funding with a FEMA AFG or Assistance to Firefighting Grant to help with the purchase of the new SCBAs. In October of two thousand and nineteen, the Marshall Fire Department was notified that the federal grant money applied was denied. Because of the immediate need for the S, replacement of the SCBAs, we're asking for the council to consider replacing all the outdated SCBAs that are no longer in compliance. In two thousand and nineteen, the capital improvement plan had fifty thousand dollars earmarked for SCBA cylinder replacement. Two quotes were received for the SCBAs and the lowest quote is coming from Alex Air Apparatus. The lowest quote to replace and fully equip the fire department with new SCBAs is two hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. I would open it up for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Quentin. Thank you, Andrew. Questions?
You indicated that the federal grant was denied. Did they give a reason for denying it?
They didn't. We applied for it in October of last year and it took a whole year to get it. And we actually just got the denial letter. It doesn't really state anything. It just says basically, thanks for participating, but we've went separate ways.
Was there other departments that were funded?
There was three hundred and fifteen million dollars earmarked from FEMA for the AFG grants and so this was a whole, over the whole country. And I had expressed some concerns at the state level about that because there was only about eight or ten fire departments within the whole state of Minnesota that received a federal AFG grant that applied, which was kind of disappointing when you look at nationwide.
Other questions?
I move approval. Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Andrew, you should be a little more brief.
We'll close the voting? And the motion does pass, we'll note there's one abstention. Thank you, Quentin. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is Agenda item number nineteen, the request for a conditional use permit for a school, R one, one-family resident district at thirteen hundred East Lion Street. And the, the next agenda item also addresses a similar request for O one, South Saratoga Street. So Ilya Gutman is here. If you want to handle these one at a time, that's fine. If you want to talk about them both at the same time, that's fine. They were both reviewed by the planning commission, recommended for approval. Ilya.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So the city ordinance requires that all schools in the single-family residential district R one have a conditional use permit. The Parkside School is existing school and there will be building addition to that. However, the existing school does not have a current conditional use permit. Elementary school is a new building, also in a single-family residential district. For the elementary school, the addition is not big, so assumption is that it will not affect the adjoining neighborhood much. For the new elementary school, the concern, of course, is that the traffic may affect the neighborhood and the, the reason, because of that, conducted a traffic study and it, this traffic study came up with some recommendations. This was, went through the planning commission and the recommendation was to approve it and the school representatives are here to give more information on this thing and answer any questions about construction and the traffic study.
So let's open up for any questions, first on the, the Parkside addition. Any questions about this for either Ilya or the school representatives?
Just out of curiosity, so what are you gonna do with the, I mean, obviously during construction and during that school year, you lose the temporary classroom, so your problem gets better?
Hi, Chris Seamer from ICS Consulting, where the owners were up for the project, helping the district through the project. So the temporary classroom has actually been removed as of last week. So this addition helps bring students back into the building proper.
But for the interim, you've got a space problem.
Correct. There's actually room inside the building to accommodate.
Okay, because I, that was my other question is, is, was, would we be considering some temporary permit for relocating? I didn't know if your intent was to hold on to that in the interim with a different location or something like, okay. That's the only question.
And the intent is that the move will actually happen in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one. That's the current plan, so while we will do the addition next year in the fall, or the summer of two thousand and twenty, those, that program may not move from the middle school directly over there right away.
Any other questions?
And again, this one's for my curiosity, is why wouldn't we just spot zone these to a different zoning instead of do a conditional use permit on a school, which is?
I believe, I believe that there is no zoning district where the school is permitted to use.
So, so it always has to have a conditioning?
I believe so, yes.
The state kind of missed that one, or?
As a councilperson, with all the concerns about traffic that have come from all the different developments that, that increase concentration, I think it's a good opportunity for us to review the traffic. I actually appreciate it coming for conditional use.
I was just curious of why or what, or you know, because it.
Any other questions about this item?
Could you explain a little bit about the traffic situation? What's gonna happen there as far as?
At this site, nothing will change. It will operate exactly.
And you feel, and you feel that, that it'll, I mean, we're expanding a little bit, but you don't think it'll affect the traffic that much, because?
While we're expanding, we're actually not increasing the actual population of the building because we'll be taking a grade and moving out to the new elementary that'll just be to the south of this building, so.
Okay.
We're accommodating, an existing program, actually making it better with some new facilities, but in overall, it's the same, similar population number to what is there now.
You know, I live close by there and it seems like when school begins and ends, there's a lot of traffic going in and out of there with parents, so.
Yep. As with most schools, we're dealing with literally a thirty-minute period before and after schools and that's really what tilts all the design considerations that we deal with.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, is there a motion on the conditional use permit?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting? And that motion does pass. So we'll move then to the next agenda item, Agenda item number twenty. This is the conditional use permit for the elementary school, which will be located at four O one, South Saratoga Street. And as Ilya said, there already has been a traffic study that has been conducted. You may want to address that in more detail.
Sure. Can we pull the PowerPoint up? Here we go. So we, last May, before school actually let out, we conducted a traffic study of these thirteen intersections, just to get the counts of how the middle school site works currently. And those are all noted there in terms of what they currently have for stops. And then ten, eleven, and twelve were of specific interest because that's obviously where the new elementary will be accessing off of Saratoga. So the traffic study recommendations included a number of items. I listed them all here. I don't know that I'll necessarily go through them. I think they were in the original packet, but basically it just identified a couple key items, districts to prepare some educational materials before the school year starts that would go out, just with a diagram likely of how the site traffic flow is supposed to work, some rules to follow in general about how drop-off will work and pickup will work. For several weeks and in talking with city staff, probably have a greater police presence to make sure that people are obeying the regular traffic laws as well as understanding how the site works as well and not bogging down that area for the residents in the area. Providing sidewalks and trails between the elementary and middle school, I'll get to that when we get to the site plan. Maximize onsite traffic storage, you'll see that with the drop-off and pickup lanes that we're accommodating so that no traffic will be sitting on South View during those times. We're pulling a lot of that internally, so again, we're dealing with a period that's about thirty minutes before and thirty minutes after, so we're, we're gonna accommodate that and then the rest of the day should flow pretty much as, as normally does. Some turn lanes will be, we'll restripe the, the current South View and we're working with city staff currently as to how that'll be accomplished. But we're gonna pull the bike lanes off and that'll be, happen on the school's property at some point in the future along the sidewalk there so that there's a bike route that connects with the other bike route that goes north-south right now. And then we're gonna utilize the city's Safe Routes to School Grant, reallocate, I believe, what's going over to West Side, is that will be a vacated building eventually, that will be brought over here and create a school zone during, either during the listed times of school or before and after school when kids are walking to school. Restripe, I already mentioned that one, and then, oh, buses will, there's a separate bus loop, much like occurs at the other buildings. They'll be able to enter the bus loop either from the east or the west, but what we're gonna recommend is that they actually do a right turn out only and then they go to the middle school. It'll be sequenced, so they go to the elementary first and then the middle school to keep that cross of the bus that obviously bogs down traffic further, so, in an effort to help that out. So all the things I talked about kind of lay out on this, this overall diagram. So here's the bus loop, here's a new intersection we're creating, and here's that drop-off drive with parking in the middle for staff and visitors. So basically, parents come in and then they stop and then pull out and go out.
And then tell me which, did I miss it on the previous slide? The, which circle on South View has the beacon?
It would be this one right here. That's where the crosswalk will occur as well.
That's where the bus, where the bus is, not the parents.
Correct. The thinking is it's the least amount of traffic and the buses are really a one kind of event, one kind of event leaving and entering, probably a safer area rather than trying to cross cars that are constantly gonna be coming in and out. Again, the trail will be along here. We'll have a ponding area likely to address some of the stormwater needs up in this area. There'll be a new playground, trails that'll connect to the middle school. Deliveries and service vehicles will actually enter off Progress Drive and being that they actually come to the back of the middle school, we're actually gonna create a drive that comes down to the back of the elementary school so that none of those vehicles are actually down here trying to access the site. They'll be separated. Adds an extra safety feature as well for kids not having to deal or cross with those vehicles as well. Here's a little bit more detail of the actual site, so it shows, shows some of those trails that we're creating, that service drive, the loop, the bus loop. The bus loop also doubles as overflow parking for events. That'll be scheduled, obviously, for when buses aren't there in the morning or afternoon, but if there's a concert during the day, that'll be opened up for extra parking for parents, grandparents. And then we also linked the, with the trails is that there's an opportunity maybe for the middle school, depending on scheduling there, to use that parking lot as well. Here's a couple building elevations and aerials of the building as it looks right now. And then these probably give you a better idea. So this would be looking from that drop-off parent and parking area that faces the east, the main entrance being in the middle. This would be the cafeteria area. Classrooms are all on the southern side and all the public items like the gym, the cafeteria would all be on the north side of the building to produce a lockdown feature. This would be as you're entering the site actually into that drop-off loop. This is the west side of the building, looking from the bus loop. And then this is the north side, which shows a screen wall that we're currently working on that probably isn't what it'll end up looking like, but it'll be very similar to that to shield the delivery vehicles from the front side of the building. And then the gym is up in the other corner. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions? Russ?
Thank you for the explanation. Just a couple of questions, and I'm not an engineer, and I bring this up only because a lot of people have approached me on it regarding the intersection of Saratoga and C Street. What does minor street stop mean?
That's currently what's there. That's denoting, so there's probably a stop sign.
There's one stop sign.
At the one intersection. It's just denoting that that's what exists right now.
So has the school ever entertained putting a three-way stop in that intersection? So you're shaking your head yes and, and the engineers told us that it's in the school's hands, so.
So we will.
Are we talking to one another and seeing what we can do?
Well, so there, this will be through street and we'll have a stop. Well, so there, this'll be through street, and we'll have a stop sign here and a stop sign here.
On C Street, C Street.
Oh, C Street.
C Street, up by the library.
So you're talking about this intersection right here.
Up by the library, because that's, that's a different-
So the traffic study was inclusive as to whether actually further anything was needed. Uh, it's something noted that further study will be needed, but the counts that were measured during the school day, during pickup, did not meet the, what the state requirements are for actual signage or stop.
And that, and that-
I would amend that statement slightly, say that the, the study shows that they weren't warranted. They were not warranted by pedestrian and vehicle traffic volume by current standards. Therefore, they did not recommend this.
And my second question, uh, this traffic study was conducted in May. What happens in the month of May? There are a lot of middle school kids driving, riding their bike. There's a lot of difference between the month of May and the month of October, November, December, January, when parents are giving their kids and children a ride to school. The traffic count, I think, would be considerably different. Whether it would be double, whether it'd be the same, but I think would be considerably different. I think the month of May, while you've got those numbers, it would be interesting to do the traffic count during the month of January, because I think you would see an increased count. I don't know that. And the other thing that I just thought of, I'm not, I, I, I'm not a parent of elementary or middle school kids, but a couple of parents have told me it would be easier if they had kids in both buildings. They're driving in on, off of South View Drive, drop at the elementary school, continue on to drop at the middle school, and come out on Saratoga. Uh, or on, uh, yeah, Saratoga. And I said, I don't have that answer, but I said I would bring it up tonight, so.
Yeah. You bring up a good point about the, the different weather and everything. But talking to the bus company too, a lot of those kids will ride the bus that currently walk and bike. They actually are eligible for riding the bus. Um, so we're looking into that too. Um, trying to think of the second thing you were talking about.
Well, the first thing was C Street.
Oh, with C Street. Um, well, we saw when the construction was being done on Saratoga that, that the traffic was a lot better for-
It moved.
For us, but, um, in talking to, the number of cars, it just died, like, you had said, it, it didn't, didn't allow for, uh-
During the peak periods, it may be helpful to have, but during the majority of the day, it's just a hindrance to the majority of the traffic going through Saratoga. And even during the peak periods, the warrants were not met for the hallway stop control to install. Therefore, the traffic engineer can, in good faith, recommend that it be installed.
So that's a, so Jason, that would be a mendad decision?
It's a, it's a decision that should be guided through sound engineering, that's what they tried to present, uh, collecting information and putting together.
So again, if my constituents approach me and saying, why isn't there a stop sign on C Street and Saratoga? What, what should I tell them? Mendad, school district, traffic it doesn't warrant it?
The school district completed an analysis, and warrants were not met.
And they should come to a council meeting or a school board meeting and voice their opinion, those people?
I don't think we have any, any say in it. Is that correct?
That's right. It's a city street.
We don't-
The city can't say the school district, or we do not believe that you should say the school district, that you, you must do something here, because the results just weren't fair.
But I think we're all in agreement that traffic flowed a lot better when there was a three-way stop.
I can't speak for Glenn, but my, my judgment, my decision would be to back up the engineer and the, the results, and the, the study, and to support the city. I, I wouldn't represent that. So that's what the council is going to discuss.
Okay. And, and again, I am, pardon me, Jim, and again, I, I just, I respect your opinion, but I, I, I still think that there's, um, either a little bit more traffic or a difference in traffic count between the month of May-
Sure.
And the month of January or December, January, February.
And Russ, I was just coming, as somebody who lives on a street that has a school dump out on, today I live on the corner of Whitney and East Marshall, it is a hindrance about 15 minutes out of the day, and that's it. So we, you know, as a city, we gotta look at, is it worth the hindrance for 365 days to have a three-way stop? And we also have, that's a fire route out. So there's ways, do we create, and Quentin can answer that, he's hiding back there, putting a three-way stop, do we hire, do we make a greater hindrance to our fire trucks exiting the fire station, getting out to 23? So that you know, so it it, it is a hindrance, I agree. But it's a short hindrance that, that is not, I don't know, I agree, you know, Jason, it's a 365-day fix if we put up stop signs. And Steve, and then Craig?
Well, my first question was, I think that the traffic study is awesome. I do kind of agree with Russ, because I live right there. And so for that 15-minute annoyance, it's both A, dangerous, and B, inconvenient to get out of either Robert or James, that's the way I go. And if I'm gonna make a left-hand turn, it's darn near impossible without people coming in. What I was just thinking about, sitting here talking to Councilman Schaefer, is, has anybody ever thought of, uh, either permanently making a one-way around here with this going in and out? And as a one-way, then it's simple. Traffic is always going one-way here, and if you temporarily make it one-way, at least South View one-way, then, you know, if South View is one-way along this side, then you can only go one-way. And that means that the inner lane can be turning into the school, the outer lane goes straight through and can make the right-hand turns. If you made it one-way for the hours of school, then that's, takes care of that. If that's too complicated, then just make it a one-way for, you know, as we make this a change. That's something I had thought of. I don't know if it's-
For my wife, who doesn't always have a watch on, and honey, I'm sorry if you're watching, um, she may not know the, the 10 minutes-
10-minute rule.
That, that end up in the wrong lane. So, I mean, any fix that's put on there would need to be, uh, I believe, a permanent fix. And, and, and I too have had concerns expressed to me like Councilman Labatt has, and, and what I'll say is that while those concerns are real, and I appreciate that, and we had the same issues when we looked at the, at the apartments out by, off of Legion Field, and some of that, and, and those concerns for those people are very real. But I also know that, uh, our engineering department does a really good job of doing their traffic studies, and I think we grant about one out of 10 out of those requests, if it's even that high, because it's just, I mean, I, I get it, you know, and I think a lot of it is, is about flow. And I think restricting turns, we had the same issue with the library with the construction and people using the shortcuts, because I'm the most important person in the world when I gotta get somewhere. And I think there's, everybody else in town feels the same way when they have to get somewhere, and you just, if you're forced to do it, you'll do it. And I think that's kind of the piece is, I mean, I like, I like, you know, I like Doc's thought about the one-way, but if you do that, it's gotta be permanent. And I could see us doing it on South View, but it'd be awfully tough on Saratoga.
Oh, beat up on South View too.
But I don't drive South View as much, so I could live with it.
If I could just say, you know, I've, I've been out there doing crossing guard before, and I, I watch the traffic flow, and honestly, the flow works. The flow on Saratoga works. It does. I mean, we're no different than any other city with a school, uh, and the traffic to it. The biggest thing is, is how many, how many vehicles can we do for queuing off of the street? Um, if you come to the middle school, honestly, I think it's more of an education thing for us, not just at the beginning of the school year, but during the school year. I was out at the middle school parking lot, and there were two cars on Sar- Saratoga waiting to get in. There was probably three or four spaces within the parking lot, because people weren't paying attention. So I really think the flow on Saratoga works. As a crossing guard, I agree, there are some intersections that if I was going to work, I'd probably avoid, because it is a school.
Or turn me on the-
Yeah, it's a school zone. Um, it's part of our city, you know, and we're gonna have the traffic over there. But what we've, what we've looked at is, is Saratoga does work, the flow works. We haven't had, I'm not gonna jinx things, but we haven't had accidents. We've had grid crossing guards to help our pedestrians. Um, and we look at South View to be mirrored off of what Saratoga works, and we think that that flow will work the same way, if not even better with the, with the bus lane being separated out. And as for dropping kids at both schools, you can drop a kid off at the new elementary, and we will have pathways walking to the middle school. We didn't want a pathway going through Progress Drive, because we wanna keep the separation of the traffic, just like the, uh, the trucks going to the docks. We wanna keep those trucks from having to go all the way around and going through the elementary school. The natural flow, when we have Reinhardt coming and dropping off food at the middle school, where's the next place they go? West Side. Well, now they'll just come down the service road, not having to bother with anything or any of the traffic. They'll be right there. That service road does not go through. That's only a service for the dock, so we won't have that, uh, interruption between the two schools, so.
One of the things that we will need to address as a city is when the, uh, South View is restriped and the on-street bike lanes go away or replaced by a bike trail, pedestrian trail, we'll need to address what happens when you get to the edge of the school property and then down towards the Hy-Vee area, and then-
The on and off again.
There probably isn't, you know, ample space there to have off-street, um, trail, and, you know, it's, you really don't wanna dump them back onto the road, and so, so that will be a challenge we'll need to address, not tonight, but in the future. Glenn, you have a comment?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank and congratulate the school district in the traffic study. This was not a superficial traffic study that was done, uh, to, to placate the city. It was a honest effort to, and you can see all the efforts that have been put in to address traffic flow around the new facility. The issues of not connecting Progress Drive, the issues of relocating bike paths, the issues of each individual intersection being addressed, including the access to the separated, um, parent drop-off and the bus drop-off, and then the, uh, combination of you, being able to utilize the bus drop-off during the, uh, times of other events. So thi- this may not be perfect, but it's darn close for that location and that operation. And, and, uh, we had long and numerous meetings concerning this traffic flow and operation. The one thing about, uh, relocating the, 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 uh, signalization from, from West Side School to this location, when that transition took place, that sounds like a minor thing, but it, it's a grand program that we were allowed to, uh, coordinate that with this, uh, location as well. We know that there's going to be some concerns, but with, uh, increased police protection during the initial startup phase of it, I th- I think it's gonna work well. We can certainly address other issues as we go, but I, I just want to thank them for, for a real professional analysis of the area, not just the accesses.
Thank you for that. And I think Glenn said it too, is, is, address things as they go. We feel this is a good plan, but, um, it's probably not the perfect plan, but as we look at things, whether it's a three-way stop at C Street, um, addressing where the, where the lights go and things, those are things-
Progress Drive exit, you know, intersection.
Yeah. We'll address those as we go to try and make it better and safer.
Thank you, Deion. Other questions?
I just a comment. I will say that even as the, in the current setting, the traffic flow, there's a lot better than when it was the high school.
You don't have all the high school kids driving.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's a lot better, since it's not a high school.
Ilya?
I just want to point out, sorry, I can-
Deion, just a, just a clarification for, for myself. The second circle, is that the parental drive in and out, dropping off kids there?
Second to the right?
Yes.
This one right?
That one?
Yes.
So I'm a parent, I go in there, drop off my kid, then when I come out, I can take a right or a left?
Correct. There's a right here. On the site plan here, there's two lanes out, one lane in.
Okay.
Talk about the stacking too, just a little bit, because of that left turn.
Cars enter here, but we have, literally have stacking depth all the way around to about this point, which is the front door. We've got the handicap parking there, but then on the way out, we've got stacking depth here that breaks down in either lane out. So there's quite a bit of stacking length. I think we counted total, if you're going all the way around and everything's full, it's almost 80-plus cars, if not more.
And if I remember right, reading in, in the materials, you're gonna have a turn lane all the way down there, so if I'm taking a left turn out of there, my sight lines should be fine?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, two things we really took into account is the queuing. We don't want cars on the street. The queuing and then the parking also. We just wanna make sure that it's-
And, and lastly, just clarification, and Craig, I wasn't sure if you meant our engineers did the traffic study, but because our engineers didn't do it, this was a school.
No, I meant, I meant in previous-
This was a school.
In previous concerns that came up about requests for stop signs and traffic controls in neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I was referring to, not, not this one in particular, but thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, and, you know, this all boils down to whether or not we're gonna permit the school to be constructed there, and I think that's-
Right.
-gonna be overwhelming, yes. As far as the traffic, that's something that the city itself, we're gonna have to deal with as a, as a city government, and we can always make modifications if it's not working, and it's our responsibility to make the streets safe and the traffic to flow, so.
Good point, Glenn. Is there a motion to approve the conditional use permit?
Yeah.
Motion by Steve?
Second.
Second by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting, and the motion passes. At this time, I'll, I'll call for a five-minute recess. Inviting the meeting, we are on
Can you start it?
Twenty-one.
Agenda item number
Twenty-two.
Twenty-one. This is the Saratoga Street reconstruction. We have a, consider the resolution for our municipal state aid advance fund. Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. State aid advance requests are due on an annual basis for, for use of our municipal state aid account. And the first one we put on, in on Saratoga Street was a certain dollar amount, and it, it is an advance, and they, they give us a percentage of that request. And if, in fact, you need some more money, even though you requested those funds previously, that advance request is only due for the current year that you apply for. So now that we're finaling the project and we have actual costs of everything, including the retainage, we're allowed to apply for another advance for the remainder of the project costs. And I'll say the appropriate project costs, because they, they don't fund things like the water replacements or sanitary sewer replacements. So it's applicable project costs that are associated with the municipal state aid system. So this is the advance that requests the remaining amount of, of project funds that are participating by the state.
Thank you, Glenn.
So it's a $330,000.
Thank you, Glenn. Questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion on the resolution.
I'll move.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting, and the motion passes. Agenda item number twenty-two, the South Hill, South Whitney Street, 100 and 200 block alley improvement project. We have a change order to consider, the final change order and the acknowledgement of the final pay request.
No further comments unless you have a question
Any questions?
About the decrease.
The only question, I like the decrease. I think that's good. The question I have though, this will decrease, there's special assessments?
It will, it will not.
It will not?
No, because that was limited to that amount. This will decrease the total project cost, which will reduce some of the local project cost. And this storm, sir, hmm, no, that was by agreement.
Okay, no, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion?
Just, just quick question. And that's a substantial decrease, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. And you can see the reconciling change order as to which items were included in the reductions.
So this did not include the surfacing?
No.
This is only the storm surge?
It does not include the surfacing. There'll be a second project initiated in the spring, but we'll, we'll see how this goes in the spring, and there may be a difference of opinion of whether or not they need the surfacing once they see how the project works. So it's still going to be wide open to the property owners if, in fact, they want to go forward.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. Motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number twenty-three was removed from the agenda, so we'll move to agenda item number twenty-four. This is the Country Club Drive Reconstruction Project. Once again, we have the final change order, acknowledgement of the final pay application. Glenn?
If you have any questions there too, I'd certainly take them.
And this also involved in the change order a reduction.
That's correct.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting.
I voted yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number twenty-five, sorry about that. Agenda item number twenty-five would be the Huron Road, Superior Road Reconstruction Project. Again, we have the final change order and the acknowledgement of the final pay request.
In this one, there's a slight increase, but not significant.
Questions for Glenn?
Move approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? Now we'll move to a vote. Close the voting, and the motion passes. Agenda item number twenty-six, consider the application for exempt permit for the Marshall Fire Department Relief Association. Questions? Entertained a motion?
Move.
Motion by John, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting, and the motion does pass. So we'll move then to agenda item number twenty-seven. Agenda item number twenty-seven, Commission Board Liaison Reports. I'll keep mine brief. The Southwest Regional Development Commission did have their monthly meeting last week. The, periodically at their full commission meetings, they want a report from any of the, the member communities. Marshall is the largest taxing entity within the Southwest Regional Development Commission, so I gave that report, really focused on economic development in this area. So the, also in the last month, or last week, the unrelated to Board of Commission, but the Highway 23 Coalition Board of Directors met. That's their monthly meeting. I serve on that board. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Merit Center met last Thursday, and first of all, we've got some openings on the board, and there are, I believe, four open positions, which are applications to the city and then interviews to be put on. So if there's people out there interested in being on the Merit Center board, you can make application to City Hall to be on that board, and you'd certainly be welcomed and, and appreciated. And in that, I've just got a few highlights off of Jasmine's coordinator report. Some key things, the emergency management services held their ambulance driving course for nine local EMTs on October 19th, so their track is getting some use with the EVOC and, and the, and the higher-speed rescue training. Redwood Falls Police Department has been using the Use of Force Simulator out there for their, training their officers. So they actually, because it's close, were able to do that with rotating shifts, so their officers, as they would roll on and roll off, so they maintained coverage, yet still were able to facilitate people through the simulator. And the Brown, Redwood, Renville, Lion County Task Force, and that's a joint powers that we use for gang and drug and other, other support pieces, were looking to seek funding to get a Use of Force Simulator until they realized that there's one at the Merit Center. So I think that, that use should increase substantially, similarly to Redwood Falls using it. There, the Track Open House had, had a good number of attendees. The Haunted Tower had a substantial, over 1,000 attendees, so the numbers, because those are counted, the numbers just in this quarter are up hugely. But the, the classroom participation has been good. The September, for per class, were 498, and then there are 543 based on repeat classes. In October, it was 1,554 with repeat class numbers, putting it at 1,674. So in those two months, over 2,000 people threw in granite, about 1,000 of those were part of the Haunted Tower. But that's good, because it gave a lot of good recognition for the, for Merit. The Jasmine and Alex completed a, a Merit general video. I was able to view a good part of that. That's going on Facebook. Just because of that and, and some of those contacts, the likes on Facebook, so if you're out there and you're a Facebook person, get on the Marshall Merit Center or on the Merit Center and, and give it a like. We're up to 365, so that's pretty good. But we'd like to see that be 36,500 if we could. So get on that, let your friends know. The Minnesota State Patrol had conducted in November, they conducted riot control training out there, which we won't talk anymore about that than that, but that's going to be a lot more happening there. And there's just a, a lot of other things that are really starting to get traction, along with, I know that Jim and Jeff and Jasmine had visited Scale in Olmsted County Facility, and the Olmsted County Facility, Scale, I believe, is in Chalkapeet, and then the Olmsted County Facilities to look at data on Phase Three, which is finishing out the shooting range. And there's a lot of interest in that. So they actually put in a grant for that, along with the fire burn conics boxes and some other things that are going. So there's just an awful lot of things happening at the Merit Center. I know during the day, I, I pass back and forth through their, back and forth through work. I'll go back through the industrial park, and that parking lot is full most days. So there's a lot happening out there, and it's a really good thing. That's all I have.
Thank you, Craig. Steve?
Nothing to report, sir.
Glenn?
I have nothing.
Ken?
EDA met. We've taken some actions, calling for the public hearing on most of the items that we discussed. Also went through the EDA budget and approved some recommendations, changes to that budget. Utilities also had a meeting, and part of that meeting was the public hearing on the electrical rates and the water rates, discussion as well on the partnership agreement, some minor discussions there, which we covered in detail here tonight. And then also Utilities, trying to wrap up their budget. They're going to be voting on their budget in December. Just one item, would mention that, maybe we should have probably brought it up when Brad was here, but this would be Brad's last partnership agreement, since he has announced his retirement next year. So, about the middle of next year. So there is some action underway by the Commission to at least start the process to find a replacement for him. And just as many years of great service to this community, so bringing that up. And there's a lot more to that to come. We got quite a while to go yet before that occurs, and there'll be plenty of opportunity to talk with them about that, so.
Thank you, John. Russ?
CVB, with Lauren's pending delivery of a baby in sometime in late December, early January, we discussed staffing situations while she'll be out on maternity leave. I also took, took a look at the final draft of the budget for 2020. With the help of Sheila from the city, we adopted a policy manual, so now there's something to go on. And sometime in the very near future, I believe Lauren has talked to Sharon, but they will be providing a presentation to the City Council on the recap of the law, of the prior year and the things that happened with, with Darren and, and many positive improvements that the CVB has made in the past year. So, and then in the library, the drive-through canopy, if you haven't noticed that, they did, they put a canopy over the drive-through on the building, and that's finally completed. And then effective in January 1, they're, due to some adjustments and minor change in hours in Ballaton and Cottonwood only because of the timeframes, and I think it's just on Monday, if I remember, just a couple hours, and that's for lack of use during those times, but there will be no changes of hours in Marshall. And then they also have handed out their reminder of November, December calendar. So CVB did, or excuse me, Police Advisory did not meet. Thank you.
And Jim?
We got a report on the Marshall area trans, they had here at council, and the other ones did not meet.
Okay. We'll move then to council member individual items. Craig, let's start, and you're in.
Nothing.
You?
Not a thing, sir.
Glenn?
I have nothing.
Jim?
The only thing I, well, a couple of things. The first is, with the snow, remind people to be, and I don't know if anybody's listening, watch out for the snowball drivers, public, private, all of us, when we're pushing snow, we can't see you if you get too close to us. We're bigger, we're going to run you over. The other thing is, I just want to wish happy Thanksgiving to all of our citizens.
Russ?
Dress like that, you're going to have your Thanksgiving.
I have a very happy Thanksgiving dressed like that. You guys all dress kind of happy.
Just, just one thing, and we brought it up. Glenn, a month or so ago, is there any update on the engineer thing with the Merit Center?
There will be soon.
Okay, thank you.
I, I did get a response back, and they are, are talking about it.
Okay, thank you.
Ken?
I just have to make the comment, but actually was going to, regarding that, you know, it's great when we see the decreases, but keep in mind that when this decrease, somebody maybe padded the numbers a little bit more, and it works both ways. We like seeing them go down, but sometimes they go up. If we're doing things right, they're going to be someplace in the middle, and we're going to have to make adjustments either way. So just keep that in mind as we go through this. It's great to see a decrease, but if we have a decrease on every project we've got, somebody's bidding too much, and we can't have that either. So just keep that in mind, guys.
And from my part, I'd hit on just, just a couple of things. The, Kyle and I have been doing census presentations. Kyle did the majority of a presentation to the Young Professionals Group. I and the Census Representative, Jim Cur-
Curso.
Presented to the Students United last Thursday, because Kyle was at, was out of town that day for work. The, and those presentations have gone well, and this is all in anticipation of the importance of the 2020 census. The procedure's going to be a bit different this time because there'll be some technology, but the importance for us, of course, is to have an accurate and complete count for the next decade. The, the other thing I'd mention is the Minnesota Flood Plane Managers Conference was in Marshall. This is a statewide conference. I know Glenn was in attendance at the luncheon. Jason was very involved in the, kind of the local coordination. Jason and I were tour guides for one afternoon for this group, which was also involved in some certification, that they become certified as flood plane managers. And then I was the luncheon speaker the following day, but it was a three-day conference, and there was, you know, a lot of good comments, but really what they wanted to study was not only flood plane management, but using the Redwood River, you know, all the way from upstream through Marshall as kind of their study vehicle. So thank you, Jason. Thank you, Glenn. We'll move then to staff reports. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I do want to clarify a little bit. Earlier, I, when I was talking about tax abatements, one of the things I said is I brought a recommendation to, or I stated at the council that we should follow the county policy, and the council didn't listen. I was actually kind of saying that in jest. I want you to know that I truly respect your decisions. I might be saying this right now because my evaluation's coming up.
We had a tournament already.
Wanted to clarify that. Three other things real quick. The EDA director position closed on Monday. I'll give you an email summary of number of applications and, and how we proceed on that particular filling of that position. We've been doing a lot of work We've been doing a lot of work on City Hall. We furbled up some dates for moving. We've had a lot of assistance from Glenn and Dave Parsons and Kyle Box on logistics. I really appreciate staff help. My understanding is that Marshall Independence is going to do an expose on City Hall, so we'll get a whole bunch of detail on, you know, where we're at and what we're doing, and kind of good information for the public as well, because it's been such a long process. And finally, and I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you wanted to cover this now, but we did place in the information only the 2020 operating budget update, and we did want to provide just a brief update due to the fact that we have a truth in taxation public agenda item on December 10th, and we proposed that we adopt the levy on December 17th, and we haven't come back to the council in several weeks, maybe in a couple months since we adopted the preliminary, and there has been some changes. So did you want that brief update by Annette? And she's... Annette Storm's going to provide that now, or would you like to wait, or?
I think now would be a time.
Okay.
It's okay with the council?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Provided in the packet was the informational, was the 2020 budget for just the operations side. We did the general fund, economic development authority, wastewater, and the liquor store. Mainly, the general fund had the majority of the updates, and since we had set the preliminary tax levy, we cannot increase it from there. So I just kind of wanted to highlight some of the changes, as this is kind of still a work in progress between now and when we adopt the final levy. But some of the major changes, we've had about $104,000 shift from when we originally brought this to the preliminary. A large component of that would be the health insurance, since we adopted... We chose to go away from the co-op and join the... I'm drawing a blank here. Peep, thank you. We did have a couple of employees that decided to jump onto insurance, so that did have about a $40,000 swing to increase our overall expenses from what we were originally predicting. And tonight, we did go with... We did review the MMU Joint Powers Agreement. So the street lighting, we did get an update on that, so that did increase about $30,000, $35,000, $36,000 for street lighting. I know the GIS, they recently moved to a different software, so we did have an increase in cost, about $16,000 there. And I believe there is a one-time capital expenditure for the radio frequency that'll have a net effect about $9,000 for the city. So those are kind of the main factors that have changed since the preliminary. We will have some additional changes between now and when we adopt the final, just because we are getting closer, our numbers are becoming a little bit more solid. But as we stated, our levy cannot increase, so it's just a matter of kind of maybe moving some funds around, but we'll bring that back for a final recommendation on the 17th. And then also, the other major change was to the EDA budget, the Fund 208, as we brought that underneath the city structure, so there is now a full-time employee kind of budgeted in there, but the numbers were fairly similar for 2020. Is there any questions?
Questions?
So we're still looking at levy increases of approximately 4%?
Correct.
Or 3.98?
The 3.98, yep. Yep.
Annette, along with the health insurance increase with the additional, we also had a savings because we took out the HSA and VIBA contributions, is that correct?
We did not take out the HSA and VIBA contribution. It's just a matter of how it was allocated.
Oh, okay, because I see it's zero all the way in most of the categories.
For budgeting purposes, it's simpler for me to know if it's either family or single because both allocations are the same, no matter what plan the employee chooses, it's just whether or not they're getting more in HSA versus VIBA. So if you're... If I'm budgeting single, I'm doing the $8,000 some odd dollars. If you're a family, I'm doing the $19,000 or $20,000 per one. So it doesn't necessarily matter which specific line item I'm budgeting in, as long as the personnel services are within range, it's just easier to budget that way.
All right, thank you.
Is open season still open, or is sign-up complete?
No, that was completed on the 15th, and so we were able to get the numbers kind of more finalized last week.
Other questions? Annette, thank you for your work on this, and Sharon, as well as the other staff. Anything else, Sharon? Glenn?
I'm going to say nothing further, other than happy and blessed Thanksgiving to all of you.
And Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor. Helena, I was on site today with an appraiser and a representative from Des Moines, Iowa, representing. Helena just did a walk through the building to start the appraisal process. An appraisal is required because of the funding mechanism used to acquire a portion of the property, everything within the runway protection zone that can be funded. The acquisition and demolition of one building can be funded, hopefully through a MINDOT Aviation's grant. But in order to get the grant, we needed a boundary survey, so the survey's been done. We've identified the runway protection zone, and we also need an appraisal to be done. So the appraisal process has begun with a walk-through of all of the buildings and the site today. MMUA, the sale of city-owned property to the MMUA, that is continuing. There's title work has been done, and there's a little more title work that has to be done. Block 11, the pre-development continues on behalf of the city marshal. The HRA acted tonight to transfer property, so we've got unified ownership of all the property. And then if you look at the building list, unique opportunities, Marshall took out a $3.5 million building permit, and they are on site. I just drove through there today. They're moving dirt on Unit 2, another, a second 36-unit apartment complex. Dirt work is being done today.
2.5.
What did I say?
3.5.
I'm sorry, 2.5. Pardon me.
Yeah.
You just missed about that.
One or two numbers.
Thank you, Dennis.
Yes.
We'll move then to the remaining items, which are the information items. We've done the 2020 budget update, and you have the listing of upcoming meetings, which brings us to the consideration of adjourning. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to adjourn. Discussion? Move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion passes. We're adjourned.
Is that your review?
We got any schnauzer?